A call to order, the study session of the Newport Beach City Council for October 25th, 2016. Madam Clerk?
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
We'll go right into current business. Clarification of items on the consent calendar. Do we have any comments from members of the council? No? All right, we'll go to item number two, the local coastal program implementation plan. If Community Development Director Ms. Brand and Mr. Alfred would like to speak to that. Thank you.
Yes, Mayor Dixon and members of the city council. As the slide suggests, it's been a long road for the city of Newport Beach since the Coastal Act was adopted in 1972. We've been working on this for a number of years. The city had its first land use plan certified in the late 1980s, and then we did a major update that was certified by the Coastal Commission in 2005. And then after a hiatus, well, the city updated its general plan and zoning code, we resumed that process and brings us here tonight. Just to show you that the implementation plan, or IP, is going to be one of the major documents in the city's regulatory scheme, along with the zoning code and the Newport Coast LCP. The implementation plan would add a new title, 21, to the city code. It's based on the city's zoning code, includes all the land uses and property development regulations, but it has a number of chapters and sections that deal specifically with the requirements of the Coastal Act, including public access, resource protection, and administration, primarily dealing with the issuance of coastal development permits, which the city is basically after to, you know, receive through the certification of the LCP. We really started in earnest in 2013, beginning with the general plan LCP certification committee. They held nine meetings between 2013, 2015, pardon, 19. And as we had a document ready, we held a series of community meetings, some dealing geographic areas, some dealing with issues. There were four study sessions, Pine Commission and Harbor Commission and City Council. And we did extensive notice. We provided notice availability as soon as the draft was available. We did press release, our news alerts. We mailed a flyer to all coastal zone property owners, provided an informational brochure, and of course, had draft copies of the implementation plan at City Hall, public libraries, and on the city's website. Now, the first action on our program since the council approved about a year ago was a set of coastal zone boundary adjustments. This involved 10 areas, and within the limited parameters that is provided for the Coastal Act to adjust the coastal boundary, we were successful on most of them. So 175 properties were taken out of the coastal zone. That includes about 282 dwelling units. So that was approved by the Coastal Commission back in April. Then on September 8th this year, the Coastal Commission actually approved the draft implementation plan, and there were extensive modifications. Matter of fact, 146 of 191 implementation plan sections were modified. Now, I know that seems like a lot, but a lot of them are fairly minor. They reflect changes in terms and phrases that are more inclined with what the Coastal Commission is used to. It really follows the language of the Coastal Act. A number of cross-references and references to sections of the Coastal Act. So a lot of those just kind of reflect things to clarify or to provide additional information. But there are some major modifications, and they involve our bluff overlay, regulation of bulkheads, the beach hours, the city shoreline height limitation zone, lower cost visitor accommodations, water quality, and sea level rise. The bluff overlay is probably the most extensive changes that we received. It will involve more restrictions on bluffs subject to marine erosion. In other words, subject to some type of tidal action, either from the ocean or tidal action in estuaries such as the upper Newport Bay. These would be the Ocean Boulevard lots in Corona del Mar, the bluff lots in Shorecliffs and Cameo Shores, and most of the lots along Galaxy Drive and Dover Shores. Dover Shores currently does not have a bluff overlay. They are basically regulated by standard setbacks, but the suggested modifications would add this bluff overlay to Dover Shores. And I'll go into that in a little bit more detail in a moment. There were some minor changes to the bluff areas on Avocado and Pacific Drive, just namely, the major point was prohibiting private stairways and trails in development area C, which I'll go into a little bit in a moment. And there were no changes to the bluff overlay in Irvine Terrace. So just to familiarize yourself with the bluff overlay that we have in the zoning code today, it creates three development zones. Development Area A covers principal structures or homes. Area B covers most accessory structures, including patios, pools, spas, barbecues, et cetera. And Area C is an area for limited accessory structures, such as landscaping, irrigation system, fences, utilities, et cetera. Now, as modified by the Coastal Commission, Development Area A would have provision for a 25-foot bluff edge setback for lots subject to marine erosion. Area B would be limited to surfacial grading and have a 10-foot bluff edge setback for accessory structures on lots subject to marine erosion. And the 25-foot bluff setback would apply to what they determine as major accessory structures, such as swimming pools and guest houses. And then finally, Area C has indicated that on bluff subject to marine erosion, that there'd be no private trails or stairways, no property line fences or walls. Irrigation systems would have to be temporary only, and there'd be limits on drainage devices and utilities, namely, they could only occur there unless there was a more way to provide them in the other two development zones. Now, the Dover Shores bluff overlay, as I indicated earlier, would involve most of the properties along Galaxy Drive and the terminus of Mariners Drive and parts of Santiago and Polaris. These are divided into two categories, ones that are subject to marine erosion, basically they'll have a base of the bluff toe that actually is in an area that is subject to some type of tidal action. And then the other areas would be offset from that and they would be not subject to marine erosion, so they're setback far enough where they're not influenced by that. So to give you an example of how the bluff overlay would be applied if the implementation plan is adopted, this shows a section of Galaxy Drive, and you would have the three development zones. You might recall, we had the green area for the principal structures and a yellow area for accessory structures, and then the red area for the minor accessory structures. So most of the lots would be falling to Area A because in that section of town, the rear guard setbacks are either 20 or 25 feet from the property line. But now we'd have an additional restriction of a setback from the bluff edge, and that varies in some areas. In some cases, it's right on the property line. In other cases, it's beyond the property line. In some cases, it goes a little bit inland from the property line. So we're going to go with a more restrictive of the two. So either the 20 or 25-foot bluff, pardon, 25, 25, rear guard setback would apply, or the 25 feet from the bluff edge. And there are a few instances where the property goes beyond the bluff edge, and that would become an Area C, which is the very limited accessory structures. Now, the lots subject to marine erosion, this shows Polaris, this is based on a different set of standards. Rather than being from the bluff edge, it's set on the predominant line of development, which generally follows the setbacks that were established a number of years ago. So again, it's the large area for the principal structures, and then you have the yellow area for accessory structures. And in some cases, you'll have a small area that will be for the limited accessory structures. Upper, at the other end of Dover Shores, on Santiago, in the very edge of Galaxy Drive, the setbacks are only six feet, and the development zones are adjusted accordingly.
Patrick, can you go back to one of those? So are, let's just use one of the, nice rectangle lot. Are you suggesting, then, that the buildable area is the green, or the primary structure area is the green rectangle, and then a home could be built on that to the north of the green area with a 25-foot setback from that green, the green line?
Not in this example, because this is an area not subject to marine erosion, so it basically falls to predominant line of development, and that was established by the setbacks that are already in place. So we have development zone A in green, which would be the principal structures and accessory structures. And then the six-foot setback from the property line would make Area B, which would be accessory structures. And then if there's any area that is not in A or B that's still within the property line, that would go into Area C.
If I purchased 2124 with the notion that I was going to fill that lot, with the exception of standard zoning setbacks, could I do that under the current IP?
Yes, because this, basically, the predominant line of development is established by the existing setbacks.
Is that also true? I'm trying to find the distinction between that and the erosion bluff edge. Is that also the case? I could fill the green area subject to the standard zoning setbacks?
Well, let's take an example of lots subject to marine erosion. So it'll vary from lot to lot, but because these areas have either a 20 or 25-foot setback from the property line, this is the property line, it's setback either 20 or 25 feet, depends on what stretch of Galaxy Drive we're talking about, that those would be the setbacks that you have to abide by today. However, the Coastal Commission would require an additional setback, it would be from the bluff edge, and I don't know if you can see it here, but it's this kind of orange line. That is our estimate of where the bluff edge is, and it's setback 25 feet for the principal structure from that line.
Wait, I didn't understand that. What did you just say?
Okay.
25 feet from the principal structure from the line?
The development zone A, the area in green, would be setback a minimum of 25 feet from the bluff edge. So you're going to go with either the more restrictive of the two, either the setback that's either 20 or 20, pardon, 20 or 25 feet from the property line, or 25 feet from the bluff edge, which is the line in yellow. So this is the more restrictive of the two. Now, I know this is a change and will constrain some properties more than our current zoning regulations. However, the Coastal Commission has established a 25-foot bluff edge setback for areas that they consider the safest in terms of geologic stability. And for a number of years, the Coastal Commission has been enforcing this bluff edge setback on properties in this area. So it is, while it's been not required by the city, it has been the practice by the Coastal Commission to have this bluff edge setback for a number of years, and they have approved coastal development permits to that setback requirement.
So simply said, by virtue of this change, we're aligning our setbacks, our zoning, to what the practice has been at the Coastal Commission. The owner of these properties, are they giving up anything by virtue of this IP?
If I could.
I want to make sure that our residents are not feeling the pinch.
Right. And this is something that we really discussed a lot at the staff level, was is that what were to happen if the city were not to adopt the implementation plan with these additional modifications to this area? And so the consequence of that would be is that the permit authority would not transfer to the city of Newport Beach, and it would be retained with the Coastal Commission. And these same standards that we're referring to today would be applied by coastal staff and by the Coastal Commission. So the reality is, is that they will still need to comply with these development standards, but they have to go through Long Beach in order to get a coastal development permit.
Were there any questions or comments regarding the bluff overlay? If not, I'll go on to the bulkhead section.
Well, I just would make an additional comment. At the Coastal, you might want to comment on the proceedings of the Coastal Commission on this issue because staff tried, nobody tried to dissuade the Coastal Commission from imposing these tighter restrictions, and we won some, we won most. And this was one that they neglected to agree with staff on, but you fought a noble battle for the residents in this area.
We did, and I think, as Patrick mentioned, that we were able to identify some of the lots, and I want to say it's probably about one quarter of the lots along that bluff edge that are not subject to marine erosion, and they have a less stringent setback requirement. And also, we have to remember that this is an estimate of the bluff edge that we're showing. It's based on a 2014 geological study that we have. So when people come in and they want to redevelop their property, they'll have to do a stability and bluff assessment at that point and determine where the bluff edge is. But again, but that's for the principal structure and for swimming pools. Accessory structures may be able to be located closer to the bluff edge. They only need to be setback 10 feet. So this is the reality of what we're dealing with in the coastal zone.
So the next big, major issue is dealing with shoreline protective devices, or more commonly, the bulkheads appear in the harbor. The Coastal Act has rather stringent restrictions on the use of protected devices, and they're intended to protect a limited range of uses there under the Coastal Act, as well as existing development. Coastal Commission, over the years, has become more and more stringent on interpretation of this, and they've been through conditions requiring expiration dates for shoreline protective devices, and with geared towards their eventual removal. They've even required the waiver of property rights to protect, to repair and maintain protected devices as conditions in coastal development permits. Our major concern, of course, is that we have a system of harbor bulkheads that protect more than just the property right adjacent to it. It's part of a system that protects the entire area and makes the harbor possible. And so we had a number of concerns that were addressed to the Coastal Commission. We worked out a number with staff, and then finally, we had, I think we prevailed with the Coastal Commission itself, and they provided an explicit exemption for development along Newport Bay. It also recognizes that there is a need for an essential, essential need for a system of harbor bulkheads in order for, to protect the harbor and the surrounding development. So we had that language inserted into the draft modifications by the Coastal Commission itself, and we feel that this, these modifications that were made at the hearing address the city's major concerns concerning these bulkheads.
So are we aware of any other city or IP that they've done this? Because they're pretty strict on these shoreline protective devices.
I'm not aware of any. There are a number of updates going on currently, and it's possible they might be in those documents. But generally, they've implemented this at the project level through coastal development permits.
So what happens to the properties that have already got coastal development permits that gave up the rights to rebuild their bulkheads? Are they going to, do they get to fall under this provision, or are they stuck with what they accepted at the Coastal Commission already?
I'm not aware of that condition being imposed on any projects in the city, but the Coastal Commission does basically retain authority over our permits they have issued. Now, it's a little unclear at what point was an existing permit approved by the Coastal Commission becomes a new project that the city can approve. That's something I don't have a clear answer to at the moment, but it's something I think that we're definitely going to have to address as we go throughout the implementation plan.
Although, I could just add as a postscript, the Coastal Commission will retain authority over the bulkheads, but since we now have explicit language in the IP, it'll serve as a guidance document to coastal staff in terms of how the bulkheads are to be treated. And if there is an existing coastal development permit in regards to the bulkhead, I would believe that it could be amended to be consistent with the new IP regulation, so that it could be repaired and maintained or replaced in the current location. There are specific provisions that it cannot extend seaward as part of that process. It can only extend landward.
So the next big issue was the beach hours or the beach curfew. The draft implementation plan that was approved by the council only can, basically had a reference that the city has historically regulated the hours of beaches, or the use of the beaches at night, and it was left at that. We had extensive discussion with Coastal Commission staff, and in the end, the significant best approach is to maintain our current beach hours is to actually have them in the implementation plan. So the beach hours of 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM will be in the implementation plan. Consequently, if we were to change those hours, it would require an LCP amendment. Another provision is that we have to recognize the public's constitutional right to access the wet sand and the water. And, but we do have provisions in the, in that section of the IP that allows for closure of beaches in emergency situations and to abate public Shoreline height limitation zone. The draft implementation plan basically had it per the zoning code, which was a 26 height limit for flat roof structures and 31 feet for slope roof structures, with a 35-foot max that could be achieved through coastal development permit. And we had our standard zoning code exceptions for architectural features, dormers, chimneys, stairwells, and so forth. And we also had the specific exemptions that were approved for Marina Park Lighthouse and Lido House. Unfortunately, the Coastal Commission established as a 35-foot maximum without any exceptions. And you would require an LCP amendment for any project that would exceed that 35-foot height limit. They did include the Marina, pardon, the Marina Park Lighthouse exemption and Lido House, and I don't have it here, but also the exception for boat cranes. So this is one that we chose not to fight further, because we had to limit our number of issues that we had to present to the Coastal Commission itself. But we hope that we can return shortly after certification with an LCP amendment to reinstate the exemptions that are provided for under the zoning code. Lower-cost visitor accommodations, as you may know through the Lido House project, this has been a emerging issue with the Coastal Commission, and we wanted to address it by basically only requiring an impact analysis on a coastal development permit that involved the demolition, conversion, or closure of an existing lower-cost visitor accommodation. The Coastal Commission modifications, which expand that to include an impact analysis for any CDP involving visitor accommodation, including not just the demolition or closure, but also the expansion, the reduction, redevelopment, and for any new project involving visitor accommodations of any type. And it would require a feasibility study to determine if lower-cost visitor accommodations could be provided within the project itself. Water quality, the implementation basically had the basic components of the existing city code requirements regarding water quality. We had an extensive critique of these regulations by their water quality specialist. And in the end, it was determined that there was significant enough difference between their model water quality guidance document and our regulations, that we couldn't actually adapt ours to fit theirs, and vice versa. So the modifications would delete the section that we had on water quality and replace it with the, basically, a chapter that's based on their water quality guidance. Now, we had this reviewed by our water quality staff, and they determined that while the language is somewhat different, it basically ends up in the same place. It does the same requirements for stormwater runoff control and water quality management. It's just, the terminology is differently. Then we have the issue of sea level rise. This too has been an emerging issue with the Coastal Commission. It was an unfortunate case of timing, because just as we had completed our draft document, the Coastal Commission adopted a sea level rise guidance document. And the comments from the Coastal Commission staff is that we should incorporate as much of that into the implementation plan as possible. We pointed out that it would be unfair for us to basically stop everything that we have done to this date, do all the data collection, the technical analysis, and all the policy adjustment that the guidance document calls for. It would take years, and we'd have to basically place the entire effort on hold while that's conducted. So as a compromise, we had this new Appendix A in the implementation plan that basically follows the guidance document, recognizes what the city has done and will continue to do, and sets procedures for the review of CDPs in shoreline areas, lowline areas, and on eroding coastal bluffs. One key to this, though, it does call for a future LCP update, although no timeframe is specified, based on a future vulnerability assessment. So basically, we were, we'd be committed to conducting a study of the city's vulnerability to sea level rise. Now, I'd like to point out that this is already required for the city's public trust lands that we're the trustee of through Assembly Bill 691, which I think is July of 2019, requires that we conduct this study for the tidelines. So it's possible that we might be able to expand that to include non-public trust lands and meet this requirement. Modifications included deleting a number of sections of the IP, either partially or entirely. One was an exemption we had for wetland restoration projects. Basically, it would allow the filling on a very limited basis, some areas as part of restoration project. This was something that had appeared in older LCPs, but over the years, the Coastal Commission has more or less moved away from this, and so they asked that we take that out. We also had a section dealing with limited duration uses and structures. This would be things like temporary construction yards to pumpkin sales and Christmas tree lots, the ones that we generally approve administratively. But I think the Coastal Commission staff was correct in pointing out that we can exempt these things from coastal development permit requirements. Only the exemptions allowed under the Coastal Act can be used in these cases, so we took that section out. Likewise, special events, it was generally taken out because the ones dealing with the special events that in coastal areas are covered by the exemptions in the administration chapter, so it was really redundant. One we didn't quite agree with, but it really wasn't a major deal, was taking out the entire chapter dealing with the amendment of the LCP, where we had the basic procedures for amending the document. We felt this is something we need to administer, but they thought it was inappropriate to put it into an implementation plan, so that, again, was a battle we didn't think we needed to fight. The permit and appeal jurisdiction maps, you might recall from a year ago that we had a draft set of maps that we were going to submit and have them approve, that showed the areas where the Coastal Commission retains permit jurisdiction and what areas they have appeal authority. However, after our submittal, they made it clear that the only map they'll accept is one that comes from their mapping unit, and that has to be done after the certification occurs. So we won't see those maps until the LCP is certified, so we had to take basically those maps out, any references to them. The eelgrass mitigation plan, we included as an appendix in the document. They deleted it without any explanation. We only put it in there because we did have policies in the CLUP relating to eelgrass, and we wanted to implement through that approved program. and we wanted to implement through that approved program. But they don't feel it's necessary to have it actually in the IP, then I don't think we're going to argue with that. The Babo Island Village Parking Management Overlay, we included that in the IP. However, coastal commission staff felt that they didn't have sufficient information or time to do an analysis of that, and therefore, they want it taken out. And that's another thing that we hope to return to the coastal commission through an LCP amendment after the LCP is certified. Then finally, we had a section dealing with preferential parking districts. This is basically the council's ability to establish resident parking permits in areas. Our coastal land use plan has a policy addressing this. It basically says it could be done through the CDP process, and we had that in the implementation plan. But again, the coastal commission did not feel that was appropriate for the implementation plan, so they deleted it. I think, again, we can go back and address this issue and get the ability to do this through the CDP process as is provided in our certified coastal land use plan. We have a number of new sections added as well. The CVLV zoning district that was done for the Lido House Hotel, that was approved after we submitted it, so we included it into the document. The Back Bay Landing Plan Community Text actually became effective after we had submitted the documents, so that was placed in. The city's telecommunication ordinance was translated and put into it. The implementation plan is a new chapter to address some comments we received from the coastal commission. They also asked us to put in our off-site parking space specifications. These things would deal with aisle width and space dimensions and so forth, so that was added. It just, again, reflects what we have in the zoning code currently. Basically, our procedures and operational requirements for short-term lodging permits was added. That's from a different section of this book code, but being in the implementation plan. And then finally, the ocean fund encroachment policy was added as an appendix. What happens next? On November 4th, the coastal commission will consider the city's application for the continuation of the category exclusion order that exempts most two and single-family houses from coastal development permits requirements. This applies to the R1, the R1 Babo Island, and the R2 zoning districts. It has the same terms as the category exclusion order approved in 1977. That includes a 1.5 FAR limit, requirement for two parking spaces, excludes the first row of lots on the shoreline. But we have included the canyon properties. It'd have to be subject to the LCP regulations, but they would fall under the category exclusion order as proposed. The only other thing is that we updated the zoning map because there was a number of properties, mainly parks, that were zoned R1 in 1977 that are now in a different zoning district, so they would be subject to the category exclusion order either by the zoning or by the type of development that occur. Coastal commission staff's report is out, and they are recommending approval. We have reviewed it, and we feel that is supportable. And so hopefully, on November 4th, we'll have that guarantee that we've been looking for, that the category exclusion order will continue post-LCP certification. So, the next steps, as indicated, the category exclusion continuation hearing is on November 4th. We have the city council hearing on the implementation plan itself on November 7th, second reading on November 22nd. Then we submit the document to the coastal commission executive director for determination, basically, that the council's action reflects the action of the coastal commission. Once that determination is made, the executive director places it on the next available coastal commission agenda, and if they concur, we get a notice of certification, and it's filed with the state, and then we're effectively certified. After that, we wait for the post-certification map from the mapping unit. So, this slide wasn't my idea. But we feel like there is reason to celebrate because this has been a very long and difficult process, going over a number of years and a number of city councils. But we're very close, I think we're very close.
Thank you, Mr. Saj.
So, under the current process, when you get a coastal development permit, you're required to record a deed restriction as part of that permit. Now that the city's going to be issuing the permit, is that same procedure still going to be in effect, where we're going to require people to record those deed restrictions?
It may be through the conditions of approval. I guess it would depend on the coastal development permit and what issues are associated with that.
Well, right now, all the projects I've done in the coastal zone, it doesn't seem to reflect any particular criteria based on the project. As far as I'm aware of, every CDP they issue, they require a deed restriction to be recorded.
We can double-check, but I don't believe that provision was included in the draft IP because that's not a city procedure.
Excellent.
Any other questions up here? I'll turn it to the public. Any comments from the members of the public?
Mayor Dixon and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. My main comment about this has been a very difficult process for the public to follow. Since last November, there has been in each of the city libraries a copy of the 500 or so pages of the city's draft proposal for the implementation plan. It seemed rather pointless to look at that, though, because the public knew that the city staff and the coastal commission staff were privately negotiating changes to that. And we've seen that there were indeed massive changes to the document the public had to review. But the amended compromise proposal was not made available to the public until a few days before the September coastal commission meeting held in this room. And on the night before the coastal commission meeting, still more changes came out, and on the day of the hearing, still more changes came out at noon with the hearing a few hours That makes it difficult for the public to follow, and when the public attempted to comment on specific issues about the coastal implementation plan that was before the coastal commission in September, they were told by the commission chair, Mr. Kinsey, the more appropriate forum and the more relaxed one to do that at would be here, but I can't see how that can work because, as I understand it, you have to either take or leave the entire compromise package that was approved back in September. I could add that Commissioner Kinsey also thought and congratulated the public and the staff of the two agencies that with the adoption of the implementation plan, the coastal commission would be relieved of having to issue permits for docks in Newport Harbor, which is a big thing that they do now, and I think that's completely incorrect. I think that the coastal commission will continue to do that. Having said that, and this being the forum that he recommended, one of the things that -- oh, another thing that bothers me is between then and now, there has been a report every two weeks to the planning commission about what's going on with respect to this. And the planning commission has been told by the city staff that they have been negotiating and working through the suggested modifications that were adopted in September. And I cannot understand what that negotiation or modification could be, and I would be curious to know if the report, which apparently was posted last Thursday on the city's website, there is now a complete package of what is being proposed to be adopted, if that is the same as was adopted back in September, or that's still a further modification that I have to read through to see what has been changed. My main concern is about the height provisions because our coastal land use plan promises that we will maintain the height restrictions we had in effect in October of 2005. And yet, the draft that I have seen and the draft that was posted last Thursday has changes that were made since then, and I don't think it's consistent with our land use plan. My time is up. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from members of the public? Please come forward. Seeing none, I'll bring it back. Any other -- any questions from council members? Seeing none. Ms. Brandt and Mr. Alfred, I want to, first of all, thank you for your many years of work. And Mr. Saj, how many years ago did you start working on this?
[inaudible]
It's been a life work, a life journey. Partially to address Mr. Mosher's comments, do you want to speak to the steps going forward as coming before the November 7th city council meeting? And just comment, I know you have held a number of community meetings, as you cited in the first part of your report. How will we be communicating with members of the public? I mean, it will be posted and the normal posting. Do we need to do anything extra in terms of the kind of changes that have happened since September 8th? Do you want to comment on that?
Well, first of all, I understand that the negotiations with coastal staff went up to 11th hour, literally, just before the hearing started. So, we make the information available as soon as we receive it. We have staff report posted, Mr. Mosher indicated, and we just recently received the final, final suggested modification from coastal commission staff, which has been posted on the website as well. As far as the public hearing, well, starting with this study session is to get the information out. We are also going to publish an eighth-page newspaper advertisement in the paper notifying of the public hearing. And we have been meeting one-on-one with the groups that are most affected by this, namely, the bluff owners, and we have been going over the changes and trying to address any concerns they might have.
Well, that's very good. I'm pleased to hear that. Well, I want to commend you and staff and Mr. Saj for your life work on this, and any other former council members who have spent many hours getting to this point. This is historic as we move forward to the final action. Seeing no other comments, what we're just receiving and filed today, we're directing staff to come back with the resolution at the next council meeting, is that correct?
Just to reaffirm that, Madam Mayor and council member. So, on Monday, November 7th, that's our special meeting that involves a number of things, potentially including auto-nation. This item will come back to you for first reading, so if you have concerns about it, please let the staff know individually. Otherwise, we're going to ask for an affirmative vote on November 7th to move that forward to second reading on the 22nd.
Okay, very good. Well, thank you, staff. Very good.
Madam Mayor, that assumes the coastal commission approves our categorically exempt area on the 4th, correct?
That would be correct.
Thank you.
Okay, Madam Clerk.
Public comments. The city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the city council. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium. The city council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are invited on items listed on the agenda and non-agenda items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The city council has discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items.
Any members of the public wishing to speak, please come forward. Identify yourself.
My name is --
Go ahead.
My name is Charles Griffin. I'm a resident here for some 65 years, property owner. And I wish to -- I've tried to be active, and initiated the California Environmental Quality Act and helped write the required documents for the city while I was here. But what I wanted today is to bring to you a new -- make you aware of a new source of energy. I'm a professional, retired professional engineer, developed nuclear weapons for the air force and for the Navy, nuclear bombs, and developed systems, 21 stealth bombers to deliver them and attack bombers to deliver them anywhere in the world from aircraft carriers with Donald Douglas, 35 years. But what I want to tell you today is a new source of energy that's being developed, which you should be aware of, utilizing boron, because we need to. It means it would be a new, complete change in all our public utilities for the source of electrical power, water, and gas, and electrical power, water, and gas, our utilities, completely new change, which you all need to be aware of. That source of energy is from the fusion of hydrogen and boron, being developed over the last 30 years or 40 years. I worked with Professor Norman Rostocker at the University of California at Irvine to develop a reactor, which Paul Allen of Microsoft is building a reactor up in Lake Forest to fuse hydrogen and boron. And you should be aware of that and even visit that facility. TriAlpha Energy is the name of the company. You can get it on the website, TriAlpha Energy. And it's a method of using a couple of coils to bring hydrogen and boron together, but that is something for you to look at. And I'll continue these discussions later at additional meetings. But primarily, the main system that's under -- that's being -- coming to fruition is from a company in New Jersey. They've been working on it for about 30 years. Under Bob Gates, who was Secretary of Defense when he was Chancellor of Texas A&amp;M, there was university students there, proposed a rocket to take the Voyager to Mars and back out to -- for the rocket. It'll do Jupiter and go and take pictures of all the Saturn. But they have developed a reactor in New Jersey now, and it's based on a -- using a spark plug, emulating what occurs in actual thunderstorms. Go to focusfusion.org, focusfusion.org. I'll talk to you later.
Mr. Griffin, thank you for speaking. I don't know, can you hear me?
Of course.
What was it specifically that you would like the city of Newport Beach to do?
Each of individually, go to focusfusion.org and learn about this new source of energy to produce electrical power, which we can put in the ocean, create hydrogen gas to put in the gas system of our house. My house on Babo Island used hydrogen when I bought the house to heat our homes. It was later placed with methane pipeline from New Mexico. But we now need to use hydrogen from the ocean, hydrogen from the ocean to put into our homes, pipe up to the top of the mountains and off of our buildings where we put fuel cells to convert that hydrogen into water, which we can then as clean water. We don't have to pipe the water from Mammoth Mountain and from the Colorado River and from Northern California. We can produce water right in our own city. The reactor, the hydrogen-boron reactor is the size of a handicap bathroom, toilet bathroom in a public bathroom, which is all the power for the city of Newport Beach.
Okay, well, thank you for sharing this and educating us, and we will look into it and look forward to hearing from you again.
Focusfusion.org.
Focusfusion.org. All right, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for your attention.
Sure. Any other comments from the public? Please come forward.
Mayor Dixon and members of the council, my name, as you well know, is Jim Mosher. Closed sessions typically involve private discussions about litigation that the city is or may be involved in, frequently with very cryptic descriptions to the public of the subject matter. I was therefore startled in a pleasant way to see that Item B on the present agenda describes in some detail a lawsuit that the city might face over flood damage pursuant to a claim that we are all able to review in the city clerk's office. It would have been even more refreshing if the agenda had provided a similar brief description of what the three existing lawsuits under Item A are about, or the three possible new matters of litigation under Item C. I can tell you that I, for one, have no idea. Speaking of legal issues, I would like to expand on my comment at your last evening meeting about the city's Measure MM on the November ballot. That measure would amend our city charter to prevent placing tax increases on the ballot without approval by at least five of seven council votes. From the very brief discussion the council had about this last year, I understood the language was borrowed from the city of Anaheim, and Anaheim does indeed have a very similar Measure U on the November 8th ballot. However, for reasons unknown to me, this city has changed the Anaheim language from requiring the approval to be, quote, "at least a two-thirds vote of the total members of the city council" to requiring at least five of seven votes. This reminds me of Measure EE in 2012, when after concocting This reminds me of Measure EE in 2012, when after concocting 37 charter changes of our own, we added a 38th about red light traffic cameras, again borrowed from the city of Anaheim, and when it was pointed out that in copying it, we left out the last part of a very large sentence, leaving it both ungrammatical and nonsensical, it was claimed that that change was an improvement over the original, and that flawed language is now part of our charter. At least to me, requiring five of seven votes clearly means something different than requiring an affirmative vote by two-thirds of the membership, which in Newport Beach would simply require five yes votes irrespective of how many council people happen to be present. Measure MM says seven council members have to be present and vote, and at least five of the seven votes have to be yes. This may or may not be better than the Anaheim process, but since I don't like laws that clearly say one thing, but about which our city attorney can say they mean something different, and I especially don't like putting poorly written language in our city charter, I just may join Mr. Bob McCaffrey in voting no on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, do you want to comment, just so we're all clear, there's no confusion on what this ballot measure will do?
Yeah, just briefly, what it does is it requires five of seven votes of the city council before any tax measure can be put on the ballot. This kind of, this basically arguably closes a loophole, those created ring riders to Proposition 62, and you do not have to have all the council members present in order to move forward with that. You just need five of the seven votes. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other members of the public wishing to speak, please come forward. Seeing none, Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you very much, Mayor. The city council will adjourn to closed session to meet with legal counsel regarding items 4A through C, including meeting with council regarding the matter entitled Healthy Solutions Chiropractic versus City of Newport Beach, Merrick Migliore versus City of Newport Beach, and Andrew J. Martin versus City of Newport Beach, as well as the claim filed by CDO Investments for alleged flood damage at 325 Old Newport Boulevard, and finally, to meet with legal counsel regarding the possible initiation of three matters. Thank you.
Thank you. We are in recess until 7:00 PM. Thank you very much. I'd like to call to order the regular session of the Newport Beach City Council, October 25th, 2016. Madam Clerk?
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, we do have one reportable action this evening in regards to initiation of litigation. The city council directed the city attorney to initiate litigation against the Federal Aviation Administration related to the Southern California Metroplex Project and the environmental documents that were drafted in regards to that project. The particulars will be available once the action's formally commenced, and it'll be disclosed to any person upon inquiry.
All right, thank you. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Curry, followed by the invocation by Councilmember Piattar, please?
Just briefly, all councilmembers voted for it. I have to disclose who voted for it, so everyone did.
Please join me in the pledge to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bow your heads to me. God, thank you so much for blessing us with this city and blessing our city. God, we ask that you would help us as a council to be wise, to use your wisdom, to make decisions that benefit the city, in Christ's name, amen.
Madam Clerk?
The city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the city council. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium. The City Council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The City Council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones off or set them in the silent mode. Now is the time for city council announcements.
Mr. Petros.
And tonight, Madam Mayor?
Mr. Curry.
No.
Mr., thank you, Mr. Selig.
No announcements.
Mr. Piattar.
I have an announcement. I'm happy to announce that we attended the Subcommittee for AQMD, and we will have the AQMD hear our request to modify Rule 444 to exempt beach fires from their open burn rule. So sometime next year, we'll hear about it, and we still have to deal with the commissioners, but that was successfully scheduled for an agenda for this year on a 3-2 vote. And thank you, Mr. Kiff, for all your work on that.
Mr. Duffield.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a quick announcement. If you're a boater in Newport Harbor and you're interested in the Water Board's proposed copper boat paint regulations, then please attend the Water Board's workshop on Friday, October 28th, 9:00 AM, the Irvine Ranch Water District. That's at 15, that's at Sand Canyon Avenue, you just have to look it up, Irvine, Irvine Ranch Water District. The city, and myself and anyone who's a boater, is very, very concerned about these proposed regulations. They're going to cause a much higher cost of maintenance on your boat, and it's extremely, going to be extremely much higher, like triple the cost to, say, for example, bottom paint your boat, and in some cases even higher. So, we'd like you to show up and if you, and show your concern, and more information is available with, at newportbeachca.gov/coppertmdl. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protim.
Just wanted to give a quick congratulations to Deputy Chief of Police Dave McGill, who's taken head position as Chief of Police of Sedona, Arizona, one of the most beautiful places in Arizona, in my opinion. And I think that everyone who drives through there should try to get out of a traffic ticket if you get stuck, but in all sincerity, to give their congratulations to a city that's getting a real asset, that's been a great, he's been a longtime Newporter, and his wife's a lovely person.
That's very nice. I concur with that. And I have a few announcements, but first, I'd like to turn it over to City Manager Kiff, who will give us, and listen carefully, we have a few changes to our meeting schedule over the next month or so. So, Mr. Kiff.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Let me pull this up. I don't know. Ready? Thanks. So, council members and members of the audience and folks at home, the council is about to wrap up its term here, which is basically a two-year term, and we have, we have four, sorry, three scheduled meetings left after tonight, and I wanted to talk to you about those meetings, because for the first time in Newport Beach's history, we would have a meeting scheduled on the Presidential General Election Night, and I've heard from a number of folks who've said it's not a good night, especially to have a big item, because we usually tip, we use this room, and we use the room behind us, the community room for overflow. The community room is used as a polling location, so it's my recommendation, and I will go ahead and notice these meetings, that the November 8th meeting be canceled, but the council hold a special meeting on Monday, November 7th, starting at 6:00 PM. And what that will be interesting to folks who are following, especially the AutoNation Portia project, it's my recommendation that we'll, we'll schedule the public hearing on that appeal of the Planning Commission's denial, again, for AutoNation Portia for that Monday, the 7th. We do have other business to accomplish that night, so there'll be a few other things on the item, but the main, on that agenda, but the main item will be AutoNation Portia. So, again, no meeting on the 8th. Then we move to the 22nd, and a number of council members will not be here. I still hope to have a quorum, but I'm asking our staff to make that a light meeting. We might have a couple of second readings on an item or two, but basically, continue to hold that meeting, but not have controversial things on there, in part because a number of our own residents will not be in town. Then we jump to the 29th. It's my recommendation that we hold a special meeting on the 29th. This would be for the sole purpose of hearing the Museum House project. So that would be the one item on the agenda on the 29th. Now, if that passes, that would move to the regular meeting, the one meeting in December, which is the 13th, and my proposal is that that start at 5:00, to potentially hear a second reading of the Museum House and any second reading of any item that may, that this council may have been, have worked on during this term. One of those is the LCP IP, which maybe achieve second reading before that date, but in case we need that, that's my recommendation. So unless the council members have any questions, that's what I'd like to advertise to the public, so the public can get some expectation of what's to come.
Will we have any study sessions on any of those meetings?
Not so far.
Okay. All right, thank you, Dave. I appreciate that. So I have a couple of general interest announcements at our Central Library, always a fun place to hang out. The Newport Beach Library Foundation's Outstanding Lecture Series will feature Lindsay Adario discussing her book, It's What I Do: A Photographer's Life of Love and War, this Saturday, October 29th at 7:00 PM. Tickets are $50 each, and she has received, she's a Pulitzer Prize-winning photographer, and her work has appeared, as I understand, in National Geographic and on many major publications, so she's in high demand. The next lecture is the city, in the Cities Beyond the Canvas series, will be about Henry Matisse, and Professor Jacqueline Hahn will give a free lecture Wednesday, November 2nd at 7:00 PM. So all this information can be found on newportbeachlibrary.org for more information. And also, for those of you who are interested in representing the community on OCTA as a public member, the Orange County Transportation Authority Board of Directors is seeking qualified applicants for a public member seat on the OCTA board. And so you may visit, it's up here, www.octa.net-publicmember for more information, and applications are being accepted through Monday, November 14th. And I also want to report that last weekend, I had a great personal experience. I had the pleasure to participate in, on an inspection trip of the state water project. I know some of my colleagues have done this. I've wanted to do this now for a couple of years and finally found an available weekend, and went up, flew up to Sacramento, San Joaquin Delta region in Northern California, saw where it all begins, at the Feather River and Oroville Dam, and really have a deep appreciation for what our Metropolitan Water District of Southern California and Metropolitan Water District, Orange County, does to ensure that we have water, good quality, and plenty of water coming down here to Southern California. There are improvements, it's about an 80-year-old water management system, and they're constantly looking for ways to improve, so we do have our water. I'm pleased to report the fish are protected, the salmon are spawning, and the water is flowing, most particularly because we had some good rainfall in the last few months, including yesterday, and we have good water management here in Orange County, so I'm pleased to report that. All right, that's it. Madam Clerk?
Public comments on consent calendar. This is a time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion. Those are Items 1 through 11. Public comments are invited on consent calendar for members of the audience. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the city council votes on the motion, unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
All right. Mr. Petros.
I'm done.
Mr. Curry.
Mr. Curry.
Mr. Selig.
No items.
Mr. Piattar.
No.
Mr. Duffield.
I need your recuse.
And Mayor Protim.
I'm going to defer to you.
All right, and I have a few items I'm pulling just to elucidate more discussion. Item number four, item number six, I have a conflict on item number 10, and I'll pull item number 11. So 4, 6, and 11. So, oh, we have a motion, please.
Yes, move the balance of consent item, calendar, Items 1 through 11, with recusal on Item 10 from Councilmembers Dixon and Duffield, and Items 4, 6, and 11 pulled by Mayor Dixon.
Here we have a second.
Second.
All right. Let's go out to the public for public comments on the consent calendar, except for Items 4, 6, and 11. Please come forward.
Mayor Dixon and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. I do have a comment on the consent calendar, but before that, I did want to comment on the city manager's change of meeting dates, which kind of seems to be a consent calendar item, although it's not on our agenda. What I wanted to say about that is, the idea that city councils have their meetings on regular predictable dates is one of the most fundamental and oldest features of the Brown Act. It survives in Government Code, Section 54954, and the public expects the meetings to be held on those dates, and the procedure when a meeting cannot be held on one of those dates, which is in Section 54955, which is equally old, if a quorum does not appear, the meeting can be moved to a later date. There's no provision for moving it to an earlier date, and I also note that the city manager's memo says that in moving the date from Tuesday, November 8th to Monday, November 7th, will involve the council waiving Policy A6. I'm not sure if you're waiving that tonight, or how you could have done that without a vote. On the consent calendar, item number three, there's an authorization of the city manager and the police chief to execute emergency management and homeland security grant applications. You're being asked to approve a resolution, as I tried to point out in writing, the resolution you're being asked to approve has at least two errors in it. Section 1 on page 3-4, it's saying that it's giving the California Office of Emergency Services written authorization. It's actually given them written assurance. And number 2, the assurance it's given in this, as written, says that the funds received from the grants will not be used to supplement the city's normal expenditures. The assurance they're asking for, it's not going to be supplant, not supplement. The two words have opposite meanings, and I have not heard in your action on the consent calendar whether you're planning to correct the resolution or not. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I think we will correct. I appreciate that those typographical mistakes can be corrected. Any other public comments on the remaining items on the consent calendar? Please come forward. Seeing none, so let's vote on the consent calendar.
The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
All right, let's move to item number four, is a resolution in opposition to Proposition 57 on the November 8th general election ballot. I asked to pull this item along with Mayor Protim Muldoon, so to bring this matter to the people's attention. I believe there's much confusion about this measure on the ballot, and I would like to help communicate its provisions. I've asked Police Chief John Lewis to come forward to clarify the reasons for the proposed resolution to oppose Proposition 57, because I believe that this resolution is necessary for the safety of our community. I do want to emphasize also that this is a bipartisan measure in the sense of our opposition and other opposition, it's bipartisan. Nearly all district attorneys, prosecutors, judges in California are opposed to this matter, this proposition, in addition to several victims' rights organizations. A number of city councils have passed resolutions in opposition to this matter measure, as has the League of California Cities and members of the State Assembly and State Senate. One of the reasons that I've asked Chief Lewis to speak on it is that, as I've learned about this measure, I have learned that the measure's opponents have noted that the felonies to be included on the list of nonviolent felonies include some crimes most people would consider violent, such as rape of an unconscious or intoxicated person, in some cases of domestic violence or assault with a deadly weapon. So I hope Mr. Lewis can clarify for all of this. And additionally, I wish to note that notwithstanding in the staff report references to certain partisan organizations, I, bringing, that we're bringing this forward because it is, in our minds, a nonpartisan matter, so it's, we just want to educate the community on the provisions of this proposed measure. Mr. Chief Lewis, there you are. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Dixon. John Lewis, Chief of Police.
And additionally, I wish to note that notwithstanding in the staff report references to certain partisan organizations, I bringing, that we're bringing this forward because it is, in our minds, a nonpartisan matter. So it's, we just want to educate the community on the provisions of this proposed measure. Mr. Chief Lewis, there you are. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Dixon. John Lewis, Chief of Police. And I thought I would start off our discussion here with just some nonpartisan background on this initiative. And I'm taking this information here from the nonpartisan Legislative Analyst's Office, and I'm quoting from them, "A yes vote on this measure means certain state prison inmates convicted of nonviolent felony offenses would be considered for release earlier than otherwise. The state prison system could award additional sentencing credits for good behavior and approved rehabilitative or educational achievements." And what's important about that statement is the understanding, as you mentioned, of what a nonviolent offense is. And what I'm pointing out here is the nonviolent in this legislative definition may be different from what, or in contrast to what the public's idea of nonviolent is. And as you mentioned, this initiative allows for early parole consideration for individuals convicted of rape, assault with a deadly weapon, and vehicular manslaughter, to name a few. There's a number of specific offenses that are actually listed in the initiative themselves, and I encourage the public to look and decide for themselves if those criteria meet what their impression or definition of a nonviolent offense is. I think that's important, understanding this initiative. Also, while crime rates in Newport Beach are slightly down this year, we are at 1% coming into October 19th of this year. Many other communities in Orange County and across the state are experiencing spikes in crime. Passage of initiative like this, with the potential to release more felons from prison, really has the potential to have impacts on public safety, not only in our communities, but statewide as well. So in conclusion to my remarks here, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you have, I think it's important to also understand who is opposing this measure. And here in Orange County, the Orange County Chiefs of Police and Sheriff's Association are in opposition to this measure. The California Police Chiefs Association are also in opposition to this measure, and also the California District Attorneys Association, along with crime victims and survivors throughout the state. With that, I will be happy to answer any questions you may have, ma'am.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions up here?
I'm delighted.
Okay. Why don't we go to the public? Any comments from members of the public? Please come forward.
Mayor Dixon and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. First thing I wanted to point out is that the term partisan and nonpartisan refers not just to Republican and Democrat, it refers to issues on which there are two sides or more with strongly held beliefs on the two sides. The council is being asked here once again to waive its policy about placing items on the agenda so that you can take a position on this ballot measure, even though the last time I checked, the city council does not receive a ballot or vote. So the purpose, as we heard, seems to be an attempt to influence voters. We've heard a lot about the people opposed to this measure. I assume there are also people who are in support of the measure. I have not studied it myself, but we've not heard that side of the issue. You apparently think it's important for this information in opposition to come out because you think it's a critical law and order matter. However well-meaning by that might be, I would suggest that if you think it's appropriate to use government resources to tell us to vote how on ballot measures, it would be equally appropriate to adopt a resolution telling us which of the several Newport Beach City Council candidates are the strongest on public safety and which of those candidates we should avoid. I think few people would find that an appropriate use of the public pulpit or the governmental resources at your disposal, and I find item 4 no more appropriate. My understanding was that elections in America are supposed to be free elections, and the word "free" has many meanings, but one of those I thought was free of governmental influence. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Please come forward. Seeing none, we'll come back up here. Mayor Protem. Is anybody on?
Thank you. I just wanted to thank the chief for his analysis. This is, first off, it falls within legitimate city business. It's being done up and down the state, and it's this case of legal women of vote, League of Women Voters versus Countrywide Criminal Justice Courtage Commission has ruled that these sort of positions for the city are allowable. And one reason they are is because we are looking out for the best interests of our city, and this actually will cost our city money. These are the crimes that were going to be reduced from non, from violent to quote "nonviolent." Rape of an unconscious person, assault with a deadly weapon, taking a hostage, domestic violence involving trauma, lewd acts upon a child, failing to register as a sex offender, arson causing great bodily injury, discharging a firearm on school grounds, false imprisonment of an elder. So our residents do care about, about being educated about this issue because it's going to affect our police resources and our budget, and it's going to affect their children and their own safety and well-being. The other point that I wanted to make about the importance of this is that when you, when you read the statement, in my opinion, it's very misleading, and that's why I thought it was so important to educate the voters on what is really happening. There is a very attractive aspect to it that says that a judge is allowed to determine what charges a minor can face versus the prosecutor. But as the system stands already, the judge has a lot of leeway as to how the minor can be prosecuted, whether it's adult or as a minor, for a very egregious crime. Sometimes minors are charged as adults. And the judge also has a lot of say over the punishment, if any. So essentially, this really is not solving that problem as much as is looking to solve an issue of prison capacity. And the state is facing a budget crisis, and they're having a tough time paying for these prisoners to be held, although they've committed serious violent criminal, or felons, and felonies, excuse me. And I believe it's in the best interests of the residents of Newport Beach to educate themselves about 57. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? We call for the vote.
Need a motion?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. We have a motion to...
I'll move. Will you approve it?
We have a second?
Second.
All right. Let's call for the vote.
Motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
All right. The next item I pulled also, I just, is item number six, encroachment agreement for existing improvements within the public right-of-way in the Newport Center area. I think this is, I support the concept. I just wonder if we should go more broadly or establish different policy for all certain, establish a principle for how we want to create these encroachments instead of making a waiver for one area of Newport Center. Do you want to comment, Mr. Webb?
Actually, thank you, Madam Mayor. This is really a cleanup legislation. A lot of these encroachments were put back in the late '60s when they built Newport Center. And when we did a parcel map on the Irvine Company's property on the 500 block, one of the conditions of approval was to take care of some of the encroachments. When we looked at it and we went back with the Irvine Company staff, we all realized there was no agreement for any of the encroachments. When the center was built, as you know, there were a lot of ballards and specialty pavement planners put in. They actually have pedestrian easements that take you out of the right-of-way, walk you through their property and back. So it's a little anomaly. We wanted to clean it up with this action. We don't have too many of these that would probably warrant a policy change unless you feel different than that, but, but it's kind of a case by case. Once in a while, we'll bring things to you. It's usually more residential encroachments, we see more of this, but not so much commercial.
All right.
I don't see any particular reason unless you'd like to explore.
No, I just want a clarification on staff's recommendation. All right. Any comments up here? I'll go to the public. Any comments from the public on item number six? Please come forward. Seeing none, let's bring it back here. Do we have a motion?
Move.
A second?
Second.
Let's vote.
Motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
And item number 11, summary review of the first eight months of operation of the city's visitor-serving marina at Marina Park. I see Mr. Webb again.
Actually, thank you very much. I wanted to introduce Shannon Levin. Most of you know her. She's kind of the heavy lifter at Marina Park and in charge of getting the marina up and operating along with the software. And I asked her to come down tonight and talk about this item for you.
Right. And thank you, Shannon. My question is really related. First of all, you're doing a great job. I'm pleased to see our visiting boats and yachts enjoying the wonderful docking amenities that we have. In reading the staff report, I know it's all, something new is always slow to take off. I really wanted to focus tonight on just understanding more on your marketing and how we are reaching out, as you already indicated, to yacht clubs and other boating enthusiasts. And then also, are we doing surveys on those who are already been experiencing our amenities? And what have we learned in the first eight months? And what can we expect going forward?
Okay. Well, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Dixon and council members. I'm Shannon Levin with Harbor Resources Division. Marina Park has been very successful lately, and what we've learned is that, you know, we've got the recipe right for all of our customer service. We're really hitting the nail on the head, and we've done a lot of local advertisement and marketing with the Log Newspaper and some of those other publications. And as you mentioned, moving forward, we need to hit a broader stroke, and that's hitting the bigger boating magazines like Sea Magazine and putting ourselves in contact with a lot of the yacht clubs up and down the coast, as far north as Vancouver, British Columbia, and trying to get a hold of those cruising clubs as they're cruising out to Mexico, or if it's cold up north, they're going to come down to us. And that is something that is on the forefront right now in their off-season. We're also working to get in touch with some of the special events, like especially the Christmas Boat Parade or the Newport to Ensenada, and some of these significant boat events that are up and down the coast, the Baja Haha, making sure that we're part of their stop along the coast. And so we just recently put in an advertisement in Latitude 38, which is a huge boating magazine, a big publication. So we're advertising, and then we're also trying to get some articles written about Marina Park, so that those aren't just kind of a canned advertisement that you see in each of the papers, that there's actually going to be an interest in our, in our facility. And that's, that's on the forefront right now.
Have you done surveys of current users, past users?
We don't have any technical surveys. It's, it's pretty much just word of mouth, you know, what did you like about it? And most people just have very, really amazing things to say about the facility and their experience. When we do have any feedback, we take it seriously, you know. They might just have a small comment about access or, you know, their neighbors, you know, that evening. But other than that, it's just been really amazing. And one of the things that I've heard, some people will say, "This place is wonderful. We don't want to tell anybody about it." You know, it's like, no, 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 you have to go and tell your friends.
Yes, we want them to know.
Right. So people are really enjoying the experience, and it's just hitting, hitting a different market.
And reservations are available online?
So we, we do accept reservations online, and we accept reservations by phone, email, online, and that's up to six months in advance. So we've got bookings already through February even, so, yeah, we're doing pretty well.
Very good. Well, I'm anxious to see the revenues continue to rise. Any questions from anyone up here? Seeing none. Any member of the public would like to speak on Marina Park? Seeing none, we'll come back. I mean, we have a motion to support... Oh, it's just receive and file, actually. Excuse me. No motion. All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. So I guess we are now go to Madam Clerk.
Public comments on non-agenda items. Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Members of the public who would like to speak, please come forward.
I'm Mike Glenn, resident of Balboa Island, also a current bidder on the Balboa Theater. My bid was $1.6 million. Chris Clurizo also bid $1.7 million. Last council meeting, you agreed to vote it for one mil, you agreed to sell it for $1 million. Anywhere from 160 to 170% more money could have been made with either one of our offers, and I know there were others on the table as well, which the amounts I do not know. I would ask the council to reconsider this particular vote from last session.
Thank you. Any other comments? Please come forward.
Mayor Dixon and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. I would give Newport Beach an E for effort in trying to achieve transparent, open government, but much less than an A for accomplishment. As a city, we have an excellent searchable archive of public documents, and I think our staff has to be commended for that. But we do very poorly on such things as televising public meetings, coming nowhere close to such other cities as the little San Juan Capistrano that manages to provide on-demand video for absolutely every public meeting they hold. We also now seem to be having a problem regarding having predictable future meeting dates. But what really bothers me is that an increasing amount of the interaction between the council members and between the council members and the city staff appears to be occurring outside of public meetings and outside of public scrutiny at all. This is a committee, city committee roster from two years ago, and it mentions in it a council building ad hoc committee and a council ad hoc committee to negotiate the reuse of the city hall site. Before that roster, there were rosters that indicated ad hoc council committees to negotiate a wide range of development agreements. I have reason to question the propriety of most of those committees, but at least the public knew who had been appointed to them, and there were resolutions specifying what those appointed were being appointed to do. But two planning commission meetings back, the commission was asked out of the blue to make a recommendation about an agreement locking in rights to 1 million square feet of new resort development, and I don't know how many new homes in Newport Coast in the annexation area. And the commission was told the details of the agreement had been negotiated and final details were being refined by a council committee. I would like to know who appointed that committee and how they were authorized to act on behalf of the city. Similarly, at the Board of Library Trustees meeting last week, the trustees heard a presentation from a Public Works employee about the current status of the new Corona del Mar Library. As I remember it, the board felt a little left out of the process and asked if they could review the so-called value engineering changes that had been made since they last saw the plans. The Public Works employee told the trustees he would have to get permission to do that from the council committee overseeing the project. Again, who committed, who appointed that committee? Why are they not on our roster? And even if they were, how could they have been authorized to direct city staff when our charter prohibits council members from doing that, except through instruction to the city manager? This bothers me, and I suspect it's just the tip of the iceberg of non-transparency in Newport Beach. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney or Mr. City Manager, do you want to comment? I'm not aware of these committees, so maybe somebody...
Madam Mayor, it's fairly typical that we would meet with one or two council members if a project is within their district and they've expressed an interest in that. We're careful not to talk with the majority of you about that. So it's not necessarily something that's appointed by anyone. This is the typical feedback that we'd ask for, from you, if something is happening in your district. So that's fairly typical of what we do. I just push back a little bit gently, Mr. Mosher, about scheduling meetings. You know, I'm kind of damned if I do and damned if I don't. I got a number of people who said, "Don't meet on election night," and I totally respect that. So I'm trying to be respectful of that. They're not council members, by the way. They're members of the public that said, "I'd like to be at a hearing, and I don't want to have to conflict with election night." So, you know, gently, again, I feel like I can't win on this one. I'd like to try to, I'm trying to be as responsive as I can to the needs of the public. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes?
Yes. Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is George Schroeder, and I've been a resident of Newport Beach since 1987, 88. And I know I'm not the oldest person in the room. I'm getting up there, but I'm not that old. But I do remember when our city council meetings used to be on Monday nights, there was a conflict with Monday Night Football, got moved to Tuesdays, but I do remember in the '80s and '90s even, I think we met on Monday nights, and that's what I got accustomed to. So, and also, I just want to speak for all the residents at home watching and for myself. I want to thank city staff, city manager, and the council for changing it, because I was dreading having to choose to come here on a Tuesday night. I do like to attend and participate if I feel there is a strong enough issue. We have a lot of things on the agenda, so to have this on Tuesday night, election night, would be ridiculous. And probably the only mistake is we didn't change it, you know, a couple of months back when we saw the conflict. And also, I've served on boards and commissions, and there's always a thing where you waive the bylaws to make an important change. So if it's Policy A6 or whatever it is, by all means do that. Let's change it so we can have a council meeting that people can watch and attend so we can do important business. Also, I want to say that the city staff and the planning commission has been working on important projects that have just gone through the planning commission with this city council. Some of this city council has been on the council for 10 and 11 years. Okay? And I think it's a responsible thing to do, if you can, wrap those things up with this council to do that. So again, thank you for, you know, rearranging the city council's schedule, because to flop those projects onto... you for, you know, rearranging the city council's schedule because to flop those projects onto a new city council without any experience with that or without, you know, the expertise that this council has, and not to say anything about the new candidates, but we do have kind of a deep bench here that we're going to be losing. So, kudos to Mr. Selich and Mr. Curry and Mr. Petro. So, if you can participate on these projects, fantastic. So, I just want to thank city staff and city manager and I'm sure there are quite a few residents at home who appreciate what's been done. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hello. My name is Beth Mays and I am the Student Services Coordinator for Anaheim University. It may surprise you to know that Anaheim has a nationally accredited online university and we are currently celebrating our 20-year anniversary. We've been known globally as a pioneer in online education since 1996, yet very few of our neighbors even realize that we exist. We're here to introduce ourselves and to inform you of a scholarship that we are offering. Our president, Dr. Andrew Honeycutt, has approved a 40% tuition discount on our online MBA and Masters of Entrepreneurship programs for Orange County residents and workers who enroll by the end of March of next year. We invite you to visit us at our admissions office on State College Boulevard or at our center at Tustin and La Palma to learn more about our history and the advantages of online learning. Our Student Services staff can answer any questions you may have about our programs. And of course, you can visit our website at Anaheim.edu. We hope to see Newport Beach residents become more involved with our university and we look forward to seeing you soon. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is David Bracy. I'm also from Anaheim University and I'd just like to follow up quickly on what my colleague Beth Mays just said. We believe people should be able to advance their credentials and their careers without having to go into debt. That is why we are offering a 40% discount to those who work or live in Orange County. That will be in effect until March 31st, 2017. It's a special scholarship that we hope many residents of Newport Beach will be able to take advantage of. Our MBA programs are 18 months in length and with our special pay-as-you-learn payment system, students are able to graduate debt-free without having to take out private loans or be tied down by government loans. Anaheim University is known for having the first fully online graduate programs on the West Coast. We now have students around the world in 40 different countries with many graduates at multinational Fortune 500 companies and with their ongoing relationship with the National Basketball Association, Retired Players Association. We even have several former professional athletes in the MBA programs. We hope by making education affordable, we can help to give back to our neighbors here in Newport Beach by improving the business skills of the workforce. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next comment, please.
Good evening, council members. My name is Chuck Gru. I came here to address Councilman Duffield. You may recall that I was here in May to speak about Museum House. It has now been approved by the Planning Commission and will likely be before you shortly. Again, I remind you that I voted for you. The reason that I voted for you and the reason all others did was that not only do you have a successful local business, but more important, you are a longtime resident. This means that you know the value of the character of the city. You know that the vast majority of our residents don't want to be in LA by the Bay and we don't want high rises. When I voted for you, I was sure that as a member of this city council, that you had worked to protect our community against developers who would like to transform us into something that we don't want to be. As projects such as Museum House are brought before you, I know that you, with such deep roots in the community, will lead the fight against them and protect the Newport for that all of us love. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public would like to make a comment on a non-agenda item? Seeing none. All right. Oral reports from city council on committee activities. We'll start over on the other side. Mr. Pieter. Mr. Duffield.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a quick one. I was at the Newport Bay Watershed Executive Committee on October 19th, last Wednesday. Our committee consists of county supervisor Michelle Steele, representatives from upstream cities including Tustin, Costa Mesa, Irvine, Santa Ana, Lake Forest. Other members also include the Irvine Company, Department of Fish and Wildlife and the Santa Ana Regional Water Quality Control Board. We received an updated copy of the 2016 Executive Action Plan for the Central Orange County Watershed Management Area. In it are items that directly affect our harbor. And I am encouraged that this document and the members of the Newport Bay Management Committee, they do all the hard work, which includes some of our city staff, will move on these items that need addressing with an aggressive timeline and plan for funding. I will be reporting back on how this watershed action plan is progressing and it has huge implications on dredging in the future trash and water quality in our harbor. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Please come to our Water Quality Committee meeting. You can report on that too, the next one. Seriously. Mayor Protam.
Thank you. The last council meeting, I was not feeling well and I enjoyed watching council from the comfort of my couch on MBTV. But, I would like to join in what Councilman Curry said that we had a... we both attended the League of Cities event in Long Beach and I attended some of the legal courses that were relevant to city actions and very interesting and informative. Thank you.
Mr. Selich.
No items for...
Mr. Curry. Mr. Petro.
Yes, as you might recall, at the last city council meeting, I begged and I pleaded with my fellow Newport Beach residents to attend the October 13 Finance Committee because that was going to be the meeting that we actually had a... the first primer on our unfunded liability, setting a definition and a foundation for just what this huge issue is before the city. This is probably... no, not probably. This is the fundamental defining issue for the city of Newport Beach and for every community in Orange County and throughout the state of California. So, I ask that you come and join us to learn about this, to find out what it would do to you, to your pocketbook, your comfort of your own home. And I'd like to thank all of the residents of Newport Beach for their confidence. I'm honored and humbled by the confidence you have in me, Mr. Curry, Madam Mayor, and those other members of the Finance Committee because not one member of the public other than Mr. Mosher, thank you, Mr. Mosher, attended. People, this is a key, fundamental, foundational issue that will affect the budget and the future of Newport Beach. Please get involved. We will be hosting another Finance Committee that will be even longer on November 14th with, again, the sole purpose being the unfunded liability, determining what that is, what it means, how to address it, what are some strategies that we can do. This is your purse, people. Please, join us.
Thank you. All right. Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. Please come forward for public comment. Is there someone?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and city council members, city staff, community members here and at home. My name is Tanya from the Association of U.S. Army and with me is my... we would like to invite you to join our second annual Veterans Honor Ride as we honor our veterans for all services to the nation. And it is scheduled on Sunday, November 6th at the Huntington Beach Pier Plaza, the entrance to PCA's and Sixth Street. The registration is open from 7:30 to 9:30 and the opening ceremony starts at 9:30, kick stand-up at 10 o'clock. Everyone, wake the... wake down a motorcycle. Welcome to attend. For bikers, we would like to ask that they must have a motorcycle license, wear helmet, want to honor veterans and obey traffic laws. This is a fundraising to support or proceed going to support the Veterans Service Center located at the Los Alamos Base. And this is all volunteer effort. Online registrations is available online at VeteransHonorRide.org. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. We'll move into public hearing. Item number 12. It's the Annual Review of Zoning Implementation and Public Benefit Agreement for Sober Living by the Sea. So, this is Brant.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening. This is the seventh annual review of the Development Agreement between the city of Newport Beach and Sober Living by the Sea. We have provided you with a detailed staff report. It's staff's recommendation that the city council does find Sober Living by the Sea in conformance and in compliance with the terms of the Development Agreement. We do have a brief presentation to present to the council if you are interested. And there is a representative from Sober Living by the Sea as well here to answer any questions.
Yes. Would you please proceed? Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Dixon, members of the city council, Melinda Wayland, Planning Division. And like Ms. Brant said, this is the seventh annual review of the zoning implementation and public benefit agreement. And as part of this review, compliance reports are submitted twice a year from Sober Living by the Sea to provide the current facility locations and the number of beds. And currently, there are 44 client beds citywide at eight locations where the zoning agreement allows 204 beds. And this map shows in green the open facilities at the eight different addresses and all of the closed facilities in blue. Also, part of the review, code enforcement does inspections twice a year and they look for the location, the number of beds, off-street parking requirements and overall cleanliness of the facilities. And interior inspections and exterior inspections in June and September, all facilities were found to be in compliance. And a review for calls for service during this period, PD, all were minor in nature. And there was one parking citation and one parking complaint where verbal warning was given and action plan protocol was followed for a 4711 seizure and no further complaints. The administrative operations were also... are also reviewed. They were all found in compliance with the zoning agreement. The offices are located at 2800 Lafayette with parking spaces provided at 2805 Villaway. And the number of attendees at the client meetings were logged, which is provided in Attachment A of the staff report. All were found in compliance with the operational conditions. The staff recommends that the council receive and file the documents submitted by Sober Living by the Sea and finds that Sober Living by the Sea has demonstrated good faith for compliance with the terms of the zoning agreement. And I'm available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Okay. Do we have any public comments? Please come forward. Seeing none. Let's go to the vote.
The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
All right. I am going to recuse myself as I believe Councilmember Duffield is as well. My husband is a member of the Newport Harbor Yacht Club and Mr. Duffield is too. So, we will excuse ourselves for a moment. And Mayor Protam Muldoon will...
What he has to do.
I am on. I'm sorry.
All right. Steph?
Mayor Protam and members of the city council, this item is really a cleanup item for the Newport Harbor Yacht Club. Just a little background, in 2014, the city approved a series of entitlement applications for the reconstruction of the Newport Harbor Yacht Club. They were contingent upon Coastal Land Use Plan Amendment that was later submitted and then deemed unnecessary and withdrawn. And so, all the entitlements for the yacht club are contingent upon that action. And with that action not occurring, obviously, we want to make sure those entitlements are effective. So, the ordinance before you tonight simply makes several small changes to the previous resolutions and ordinance to make that entitlement process effective. And so, we can proceed forward with the permitting of the reconstruction of the yacht club, which is expected to occur fairly shortly. So, if there's any other questions, happy to answer it.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Counsel?
I'll move the item.
A public comment?
Thank you, Mayor Protam Muldoon and members of the council. My name is Jim Mosher. I read the staff report. I think I understand the action that's involved here, but I am a little confused about it. The city apparently amended the general plan to change some of the property uses around the yacht club from residential to private institution. And as near as I can make out, there was a plan to make a comparable change to the coastal land use plan. As we just heard, that was withdrawn because apparently from the Coastal Commission point of view, that was not necessary to go forward with the coastal development permit for the yacht club rebuilding on the yacht club property. However, if we changed the general plan, I'm not understanding why we didn't go ahead with the anyway with the comparable change to the coastal land use plan because it seems now we... if I'm understanding this, we now have an inconsistency between the two. One of them is showing the properties changed to private institution. The other one is showing them still residential. So, I would like to understand why we didn't continue with the coastal land use plan change and if there's any problem with the two being inconsistent as they now appear to be. Thank you.
Were we asked for clarification? Any other public speakers on this item? All right. Seeing none. Mr. Campbell?
Certainly. The general plan and the coastal land use plan involved really an increase in the intensity of the development as well as to change the land use of certain residential parcels that are under the parking lot. Now, the coastal land use plan is not inconsistent in that it does allow for the intensity of development that the general plan amendment authorized. And so, there really wasn't a need to increase or change that intensity. So, it was really kind of a cleanup item between the items. And so, while we have a minor inconsistency with some land use designations of some lots under the parking lot, it really doesn't change the intensity or affect the ability to do the project. And so, we felt it was important just to move forward and take that off the commission's agenda and allow it to go forward at the coastal development permit. So...
Thank you. All right. Mr. Petro, do you have the motion? Second in. All right. Call of duty.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance title for ordinance number 2016-16 and ordinance of the city council of the city of Newport Beach modifying the effective dates of city council resolution number 2014-19, resolution number 2014-20, and ordinance number 2014-6 regarding a replacement clubhouse for the Newport Harbor Yacht Club located at 720 West Bay Avenue. Go ahead and start the motion. Oh, yeah. The motion carries unanimously, 5-0.
For the record, I would like it noted, as a diehard Cleveland fan, I was mayor for a moment while the Cleveland Indians were in the World Series.
Your moment of glory. All right. Thank you. All right. Item number 14 is Seminix Slough Maintenance Project Award of Construction Contract. Mr. Webb?
Yes, Madam Mayor and council members. This is an item we're bringing back. As you recall, about two meetings ago, we had a bid and we rejected bids and had to reformat it. And we've come back with bids for favorable recommendation to you tonight. Mark Vakoyevich, our deputy director and city engineer is here to give you a small staff report.
Okay.
Thank you. Good evening. Very briefly, as you may know, the Seminix Slough used to be part of the former alignment for the Santa Ana River as it came through Newport Beach. Now, it is part of a larger estuary and drainage system there too. Several years ago, or actually just a few years ago, the Army Corps of Engineers dredged kind of the northern and western half of the slough and created a further estuary above that. And what we're proposing to do tonight is to dredge and maintain the southern or the eastern half, again, shown here in red. It's approximately 7,000 cubic yards that we would remove by de-watering that area. into the slough. And here's a view from the Newport Shores, uh, neighborhood. Project would start here, um, in probably early December, continue for about, uh, three months. Uh, we have all of our permits. Um, as best I can tell, this project has been talked about for many, many years. And we're finally, uh, got all of our permits in place and we're excited to get moving on it. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Petro.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, Mark, your, your comments well taken. Uh, I remember, uh, as I started my tenure on the council, uh, and would visit with my friends in the shores, which I will still say put on the best party. Those folks know how to have a barbecue. Um, this matter came up and I believe I have attended, uh, a handful of meetings with the folks in the shores. I have attended meetings with, uh, other representatives, uh, related to this. It's been four years that I've been trying to work this out. We have been stymied by potential toxins in the soil. We've been stymied by the question of easements along the banks. We've had to address ownership matters. This, this simple project of just removing sediment from a water, uh, way seems to have just every possible roadblock that has been thrown in front of it. So it is my great pleasure that I move the award of construction contract for the Seminix Slough Maintenance Project.
I'll second.
All right. Any comments from the members of the public? Please come forward.
Uh, Mayor Dixon and members of the council, I, I seem to recall from the previous meeting, it was confirmed that the western side of this, for some obscure reason, is still privately owned, but the city was in some kind of negotiation for that. And I'm curious if any change has happened in the status of what's shown in purple on this map, page 14-5 of the staff report, or the taxpayers will still be paying to dredge something or improve something that is still technically privately owned. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Webb, do you want to address that point?
Actually, yes, ma'am. Um, as you recall, we had a discussion with the private property owner who bought the, a portion of the slough to the east side, uh, on a tax sale. It is privately owned. We've tried to negotiate with him to get the property. Uh, we reached out and offered council's, uh, fair market value price that you gave it to, and he still was not able to, uh, come to terms with that. He thinks the property's worth a lot more. So at this point, we're recommending to go forward without it. We can work on our property. We own the, uh, eastern half of the slough and we'll go ahead and do all the removals there.
Does that compromise the work that we would want to do?
Um, it won't compromise his property and I think we'll be able to get out enough material that'll make, uh, what we wanted to do, accomplish the effort there.
All right, very good. Any other public comments? Seeing none, we'll come back to the council. Any comments? Seeing, did you have a comment, Mr. Piattar? Nope. All right, let's vote.
The motion carries unanimously, seven, zero.
All right, our last item, number 15, Police Headquarters and Fire Station Number Three Roofing Project. Mr. Webb.
Yes, this is a carry-on from the last item. If you recall, we had some discussion on this and we wanted to get some further detail from, uh, for various folks, for Councilmember Piattar and others. So our staff, Mark Vakoyevich went through and he'll give you a little update on that. We've got that material and we're coming back tonight to recommend approval of the project and start the roofing project.
Okay. Thank you, Dave. Again, uh, very briefly, I'll just kind of go over, I prepared a, a quick little overview of, of roofing systems, in particular for flat roofing systems, because, um, this is what we're dealing with on the police station and on the fire station, too. There's basically three different types. And within each different type, there's a different variation and, and method. Some are more popular than others. Um, you know, a lot of folks, uh, recognize and know of a tar and gravel roof. It's, it's a very common roof. But the newer technology is more towards what's called a single ply membrane roof. However, what we're proposing is what's called a modified bitumen, uh, or, uh, bitumen roof, too, which is kind of a, a modern, high-strength rubberized membrane. The roofing systems depend on a lot of different factors, uh, including location, what kind of lifespan you want out of them, the nature of the facility. Again, if the equipment below is as critical or if it's a warehouse, maybe it's, you know, if you get a leak, it's not as critical. Um, and basically, what kind of equipment and penetrations you have on the roof, too. Labor seems to be the overwhelming cost factor when it comes to these roofs, because they need to be torn out and then replaced. And then, all of the facilities that are on there, too. This is a prevailing wage construction, uh, project as well, too. And one of the things I noted in talking to some contractors, what was, and I haven't been able to verify this factually, but in their estimation, the cost of labor for roofing projects over the last 20 years has increased by 400%. So, that's maybe an anecdote, maybe it's not correct, but, uh, that was the information that I got from some contractors. But what we did separately over the last two weeks is we hired a third-party, um, specialty consultant, which, all they do is roofs. And we had them come out and take a look at our fire station roof. And they agreed, first thing being that it needs to be replaced. And, and they also agreed in writing that this is a very, very flat roof. Actually, they used very only once in their, in their letter. But, um, and then they gave, they recommended, um, and I think they, they wrote something, "If I were doing this roof, I would choose one of, one of two roofing systems," which was this modified bitumen with gravel or single ply roof. Um, and for, so, back to our, our recommendation for the, the police station, you know, based on its size and how many penetrations and, uh, what's proposed. It's a, it's called, what's called a torch-down modified bitumen roof. Um, and it has specialty walkway pads and different things, um, all the Title 24 coatings and, and, and it comes with a 30-year, um, labor material, non-prorated warranties. In other words, if something leaks over the next 30 years, they come and fix it. Uh, fire station's a little bit different. It's a different version of a modified bitumen roof, but it also has gravel on top. The gravel acts, um, as another barrier, acts as a, as a weight. It acts as a, uh, moisture dissipator as well, too. Um, but this cost is a little more expensive. But as we really dive down into it, you know, we found out, you know, you look at all the different walls, uh, vertical walls, base flashings that you have to roof that increases the square footage. We have an extremely flat part of the roof where we had to actually build what's called a cricket or a little mini drainage, uh, canal. Um, and then it also comes with a 30-year warranty. I think I showed some of these pictures to you at the last council meeting. Uh, here's an overview of the police station, uh, roof. Um, pretty easy, you know, we just work around a few things. Um, but i- it's very complicated, 33 air conditioning units and the heliport and things like that, too. It's very, very, most of the cost is in labor. And then on the fire station, um, it's a simpler building. Um, the, the west side has more of the, the units and things like that. You can kind of see where the ponding is on the east side where we're proposing to build, um, the little cricket sub-drainage system. And again, some of the other photos. It's labor-intensive, um, and it's, you know, mission-critical facilities, too. So the, um, and warranty, we felt was, was very important. And we have a good quality product. It's been used, uh, this company and their products have been used in other cities like Huntington Beach and Fountain Valley. Um, and, um, here are the prices here, but we, uh, we're, we're using this, the, uh, special purchasing agreement through the U.S. Communities, um, Government Purchasing Program. Um, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions up here? Mr. Piattar, did you have a question?
Yes, please. Uh, Mark, you said, we'd been looking at some different options. You said the options that the consultant recommended was the single membrane roof or the, uh, gravel roof. Uh, and this afternoon, you said you got some preliminary numbers that basically the contractor could do either one for the same price.
Um, yes, what he said is, he, he didn't have time to do an official cost estimate on that, but in his opinion, that it would be, um, close to the same price. But the big difference being that a single ply membrane roof would have a 20-year warranty as opposed to a 30-year warranty. And then the other difference being that you would have to add, um, it doesn't do as well for tr- traffic areas, basically where you have equipment that you need to maintain. In this case, our air conditioning units on, on the west side of the building. Here for the fire station. So, that was, um, their recommendation. I mean, it's certainly an option, but, um, but it, it should be about the same price. It could be more, it could be a little bit less. But I think we make up for it in the, in the, in the warranty.
So the, does the bitumen roof, the gravel roof have the traffic pads in it for the equipment as well? Do you know?
I don't think so, no. Because the gravel can act as, as that, uh, where you can walk on top of.
Yeah, you walk on top of the gravel and it kind of pushes through to the roof and pokes holes in it. Yes, that's what happens. Uh, I've worked with Mark. Mark's been really good on this thing. Uh, the, the single ply membrane roof is a more modern roof. Even though they say that the warranty is the same, the experience has been that those roofs are lasting longer. Uh, my preference would be is to, to go with that roof. Uh, I guess the question would be is if we were to do that, do you want to come back to us with a number? Or can we give you authorization to go with that roof? And only if it's higher, you'd come back? If the council so decided?
You know, um, okay, um, well, we could, uh...
Yeah, if that's the council's desire, probably best, just go ahead and bring it back on a future agenda.
Well, are you making a motion for that?
So my proposal would be, if you, if bringing it back's the right way and we're not in an urgent situation, like you said before, is to come back with a single ply roof for the fire station with traffic pads and a, and a final number that we can approve.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Is there a second?
That's a motion.
Is there a second? Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Um, Dave or Mark, may I just ask a question? Are we, do we, we have a live bid now? Are we going, is, are they at risk if we delay further?
No, because we're using the, uh, Government Purchase Program. I mean, the industry's definitely going to be busier here sooner rather than later. Um...
Are the, are the bids going to hold that you currently have?
Yes.
And then, did you say that you had a third-party concur in the recommendation that you're presenting?
They said you could use either one and they would recommend either, either system. So, I think you're basically down to a preference issue, um, and also, you know, 20-year versus 30-year warranty. So, I think for the same price, we can get a 30-year warranty roof. That would be our recommendation.
Just one other thing to consider. The FFP calls for this building to be replaced in 2025. Now, we would be recommending probably because particularly with the police station, some other improvements, we, when we talk to the Finance Committee this year, maybe pushing that another five or 10 years. But I don't think this building, unless council sees otherwise, will be there in 20 years, because the direction was to try to relocate these facilities. That's just something to consider if we're looking between a 20 and 30-year roof.
All right. Any, oh, Mr. Curry.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would offer a substitute motion to move the staff recommendation, uh, as presented by staff. Uh, it's just utterly foolish here to try and re-engineer this building because some councilman thinks you ought to do it a different way after going through the, an extensive process here, uh, to get this bid, to engineer the process, to come up with professional specifications, and then to have someone come up and say, "I think you ought to do it this way." It's just foolish. So, I would, uh, offer a substitute motion to move the staff recommendation.
All right. Um, any comments from the public, please? Come forward. Seeing none, we'll come back here. We will vote on the substitute motion to accept the staff recommendation.
I think we have discussion on that first.
Okay. Go ahead.
Yeah, you know, it doesn't make any e- difference. You can flip a coin, one way or the other. It, it is a matter of preference. Gravel is not a roof that's used very wide, widely. And it's not just my opinion, the independent consultant said the same thing. So, you know, it's up to the council, either way they want to go. I, I think that getting rid of gravel and, ends up with an easier, more maintainable roof. Uh, the warranties tend to not be worth the paper they're written on because the conditions of actually paying out on them are so severe that no one ever maintains their roof adequately to say that, you know, they're going to pay off in a warranty. So warranty doesn't mean anything. Uh, on a gravel roof, you can ask people that's maintained roofs, you know, a, a leak will come in one spot and the actual penetration in the roof where it's leaking is, you know, 20 feet or 30 feet or 40 feet away. Uh, and it's very hard to find on a gravel roof where it's a lot easier than a single membrane roof. So it's just a matter of, of, uh, preference. And I, and I do think from a maintenance standpoint, the, the industry is going away from gravel and they're going to the single membrane roof. So, it's no skin off my nose. I just think it'll be better for the city if we go single. And I have put a million and a half square feet of roof on, so I've bought a couple of roofs before. Uh, and the roofing consultant that they use is a very widely, um, accepted roofing consultant.
Okay, Mr. Curry, did you, okay. Any other comments? Let's call for the vote on the substitute motion.
Councilmember Duffield and Piattar? Thank you. Go ahead. The motion carries five, two, with councilmembers Piattar and Duffield voting no.
Okay, Madam Clerk. I'm sorry.
Motion for reconsideration. A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council, either this meeting or the previous meeting, may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Seeing none. We are adjourned. Thank you.